We're set, all right. I will call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for Tuesday, May 28, 2013. Would the recorder please call a roll? Counselor Bennett.
Here.
Counselor Tesler.
Present.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Claussen.
Here.
Counselor Dickey is absent and sitting in for her tonight is guest Counselor Aaron Dickey.
Here.
Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Benares is absent. Counselor Clem.
Here.
Mayor Peterson. Here. Thank you very much. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have some additions and I guess just additions to the agenda. Counselor Bennett, would you like to introduce those?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the additions to the agenda.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki and thirded by Counselor Tesler to approve the additions to the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, we have time for council comment. Are there councilors with things to share? And first of all, I should say, welcome to the younger Mr. Dickey. We appreciate you being with us this evening. Maybe you'd like to just introduce yourself.
I'm Aaron Dickey. I'm Counselor Dickey's son. I'm in my second year of college, lived in Salem for most of my life. So yeah, I'm sitting in for my mom today. Good opportunity, thanks.
Well, we welcome you here. We're very glad that you're here and you will be able to participate in the discussion this evening. The thing you will not be able to do is to introduce motions or to vote, but we certainly welcome your comments and appreciate you being here tonight.
Thanks.
Okay. Council comment. Counselor Claussen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. After the long weekend, my memory is blurring together.
Well, me too.
I believe it was last week was the Salem Police Awards Ceremony. Am I right on that, Casey? Was it last week or the end of the week before?
It was the week before.
Anyway, I've never been to that and I'm not even sure if we've had one since I've been on council, but it was incredible. And I wanted to let all the councilors know, I mean, I sat there and I listened to all these incredible stories of heroism out of our police department. And the whole time, I'm sitting there, well, actually first, I believe Officer Zamora was his name who received the Salem Police Medal of Honor for confronting a bank robber who fired a rifle at him while he confronted him on his own. He ended up taking him down with his handgun in the middle of the street and then immediately runs around the vicinity just checking to make sure everybody's okay. I mean, incredible. I'm sitting there in the chair right over there, listening to Officer Zamora's wife and two, three, four-year-old aged kids playing in the back row. I was like, wow, we've got incredible people on our police force. It brought a ton of reality to it for me because, I mean, I can't even imagine doing that and making that kind of confrontation with my kids at home. So anyway, it was incredible. It was well worth the time spent and, I mean, it was just, it was great. So anyway, I don't know if the chief is here tonight, but if the city manager could pass that on, it was great.
Good. Thank you. Other comments? Okay. We have a couple of proclamations. The first has to do with Fill the Boot Days. Do we have anyone here from the Salem Fire Department that's, oh, right up there, come on down. Welcome. Okay, yes, we have quite a few people here tonight. I'm so glad you're all here. This is great. Fill the Boot is an annual event in our community that the Salem firefighters have supported for a number of years and very ably and well done. And so it's really a pleasure to have you here tonight to talk about this. And I believe that, I have a list here of guests attending. Ian Fitzgerald, your captain, welcome. And Matthew Brozovski.
Brozovic.
Brozovic, all right, welcome. And you are also our captain. We have a firefighter, Chuck Ettle.
I'm sorry.
He's not here this evening. He's MIA. All right, that's firefighter talk for he didn't show up. Colleen King Showwater. Colleen, nice to see you here. Tammy Haye, James Haye, Christopher Haye. Hello, Christopher, welcome to City Council. And his sister is Emily. Nice to see you, Emily. Thank you for coming as well. Good to have you all here. We are very, very pleased to always be supportive of this event. And I have a proclamation to read. Whereas muscular dystrophy refers to a group of more than 40 neuromuscular diseases and whereas the Muscular Dystrophy Association is a voluntary health agency that was created in 1950 by a driven group of parents whose children suffered from a form of muscular dystrophy. And whereas 75 percent of every dollar raised by MDA goes directly to research, health care, and education, local 314 firefighters have held annually the Fill the Boot Days in Salem, raising thousands of dollars to benefit children with neuromuscular diseases. And whereas on behalf of all the people of Salem, I offer our best wishes to the people living with neuromuscular diseases in Salem. And now therefore, I, Anna Peterson, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim May 30th and 31st, 2013, to be Fill the Boot Days in Salem and encourage citizens to participate by dropping money in the boot at one of the following intersections, Market Street Northeast at Lancaster Drive or Liberty Southeast at Trade Street. And this proclamation is dated today, the May 28, 2013. So I present this proclamation to you and wondered if you'd like to say a couple words?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Well, I'm going to keep it really short and sweet because, you know, basically, we're the grunts. We're out there just standing where they're with the boot so I can, I can tell you all sorts of stuff, but the people that I think that it really impacts is the family. You know, we're out there, and if you, if we figure that the average firefighter raises a hundred dollars per hour while they're standing there filling the boot, that's a pretty profound amount of money that can go directly into helping these families. So I guess Tammy, would you like to have a little word here?
I want to say I love the grunts. You are more than grunts. You guys, not just the fire department, but everybody who donates, they, they make our lives better and we are grateful without you guys in the fire department and the MDA. You know, we would be doing this ourselves and it is a very difficult thing to do when you're on your own, like we thought we were in the beginning. It's just, it's a wonderful thing to have help, you know. We are a proud family and we don't like help, but we can't do it ourselves, honestly. We need you and, and our friends, the MDA. We've made great friends that can't do it alone either. So we want to tell you how, well, Christopher would probably like to share, yes, about summer camp. This is his second year. He's going to be going. Last year was his first year.
Christopher, would you like to tell us about going to camp?
It's super fun to go to summer camp. My favorite thing to do there is sports.
Wonderful. And how long can you stay at camp?
Six days.
Well, so you're there several nights. That's wonderful. We're so pleased to be able to be here tonight and to recognize you and recognize your family and say thank you to all of you because you help us to know the needs in our community. We are very pleased to be a part of helping to meet those needs. Christopher, thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Madam Mayor, what time will they be at those intersections?
Oh, that's a good question. Do you know time schedules?
We will be there from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM in both intersections. So on Thursday, we can start even earlier, but from 7:00 to 7:00. So you can come in the morning and come back in the evening. So we're so perfect.
All right. Well, we're very happy to have you all here. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Christopher, wonderful. All right, we're getting the boot going around here. Okay, thank you, yes. Okay. We have a second proclamation tonight. Proclamations are really fun, I must say. Welcome. Welcome. All right, this proclamation has to do with the Summer of Reading Program. And we have guests Arturo Vega Vargas, did I say that right? I better. Karen Fisher, Christopher Rumbaugh, and our own BJ Toey from the Salem Public Library. Please come on down. Okay, welcome. I'm fine, thank you. Thanks for coming. I'm so happy to have you all here, BJ. This is so great. Just appreciate it so much. Reading is certainly something that is an important part of our lives here at the City of Salem. Better put my glasses on for this one because I don't want to muck a word. All right. Whereas the educational success of Salem's children is essential for the future of the city. And whereas, over the summer months, many students lose more than two months in reading achievement. And whereas, summer reading programs are cost-effective vehicles for boosting school year achievement. And whereas, many organizations, school districts, and libraries are key partners in assuring a variety of options for summer reading opportunities. And whereas, offering learning opportunities throughout the summer helps to prevent the loss of skills gained during the school year and close the achievement gap to assure the healthy development of our children. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Anna M. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Salem, proclaim the Summer of 2013 as the Summer of Reading. To further encourage reading by people of all ages, I'm inviting children and adults to send me short reviews of the books that they've enjoyed. I promise to read each and every review. We're going to share them with the community through the city website and they'll be posted through the Salem Public Library as well. And whether you're lounging at the beach, traveling on an airplane, sitting around a campfire, or enjoying air conditioning at the library, we're going to be happy for that, I know. We will. I encourage parents to take time to read with your children and have them read on their own. Summer reading is important for every child. And this proclamation is dated for Salem, the 28th day of May, 2013. So I'm presenting this proclamation to you. And I want to express my sincere appreciation. When you came to visit me in my office and we began talking about my idea about the book reviews, you were so welcoming and supportive of the idea and I really thank you for that. And then I understand that you took it further. And you're out talking around the county. Do you want to talk about that a minute?
Yeah, it was very exciting to chat with Mayor Peterson. And it was, I didn't have any plans of putting together a proclamation of a Summer of Reading, but during the conversation, I say, oh my God, this, this is a great idea. I think we need to take it a little bit further. So what we have been doing in the Children and Families Commission and Reading for All is to approaching other cities to ask if they can also do the proclamation of Summer of Reading. And we also approached the Board of Commissioners and June 12, they are going to do a proclamation as well. And everything just because we had 20 minutes conversation in Mayor Peterson's office. So it's great. And again, we encourage all parents, adults, grandparents, childcare providers to read to a child or to visit the local public library, in this case, the Salem Public Library. And I bet they are going to share some of the programs that are going to be happening during the summer. So if you don't mind, could I pass the microphone too?
Well, every year, the children, we have a summer reading program every year for children and teens, but not every year do we have a mayor like Anna Peterson. Anna has been amazingly supportive of literacy and, and our public library and thank you so much.
And on behalf of grown-up readers, I want to thank Mayor Peterson for including the adults. And the Adult Services Department of Salem Public Library will be doing Adult Summer Reading Club as we've done the last couple of years. But it's, it's great having that focus from you and, and it, it gives us that energy that, that we need and I think it's, I think it's going to be a great summer.
And I just say thank you again, Mayor Peterson. I really cheer all of you because when we have the children engaged and their families engaged for the summer, we know we're going to have a successful summer. So my hat is off to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You are, it was, no, I saw you running out the door and I wasn't sure what to do about that. All right. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay. We have time now for public comment. And this is for items on the agenda that do not have public hearings. And I see that there is one person who has signed up, Scott Snyder. Good evening, Scott. How are you? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Scott Snyder. I, I work at the Grand Hotel downtown here, 201 Liberty Street Southeast. I'm here to speak in support of the annual report that you received as part of your packet from the Cultural Promotion Tourism Advisory Board. We're very proud of the work that we've done over the course of the last 12 months and hope that you'll find enjoyable reading in there. I do want to just highlight, one of the biggest successes of the year is the reworking of the rubric that you folks helped us with a couple of years ago, just fine tuning and making it clearer to our applicants, grant applicants, so that they can be able to qualify for the funding necessary to run their organizations and events and also the capital assets. So we are trying to be good stewards of the money and making sure that it's getting as much of a bang as we possibly can for that. So thank you very much for your time.
Well, we really appreciate, Scott, your leadership with the Trans Occupancy Tax Committee and the, the work that you've been doing, not just this year, but for several years. You're too modest when you say you work at the hotel. You are the general manager and a, a large part of the success really rests on your shoulders and we appreciate that so much. I want to tell you how proud I am to be a mayor in a community where we have so many really active organizations that are regularly looking at ways to make our city more inviting to tourists and also a more pleasant and intellectually exciting environment for the people who live here.
I agree. It's nice to be able to, when somebody asks, is there anything to do, list off three or four or five things every weekend or even during the week to, to help, help them fall in love with Salem like we did, so.
That's great. Thank you so much. Counselor Tesler.
Thanks for coming down. I was just going to say, I don't think I've ever seen you bring me room service at the hotel, but, you know, maybe. So anyway, no, I just wanted to say that I remember when I first started on council, how TOT was just a head-splitting experience. And, you know, I think, you know, and having a lot of recipients in Word Two, you were always constantly hiding from people, you know. I think that the process has gotten a lot better over the spectrum of years and I think that we've made some really good changes and, you know, I, I think it's working. And do you feel that it's working?
Oh, I had, it was my most effective and efficient year of grading. I didn't feel like pulling what little hair I have left out by then, so it was, it was very positive. And, and, you know, just from the feedback from the other eight committee members, they were all very pleased. I mean, we're already working on a little bit of fine tuning again for next year, but it was, it was, of the four years that I've been grading, it was the, the most efficient time that I've had, so.
Okay, well, good. Praise indeed. So we're happy that you're happy.
Thanks.
Wonderful. Are there questions for Mr. Snyder? Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Scott, thanks for your work on the, the board and then the fellow board members as well. Just wanted to know, I don't know if we pulled this for later discussion, but in the annual report, it shows two things that are just absolutely wonderful. And that is that we've tied room nights to a couple of the more cultural type events and facilities that we support. And always having that linkage just helps it, helps us to understand why you're being successful. You're tying tourism to the attributes of our community, but also that we're up 8% in terms of room nights. I mean, whatever you've been doing the last couple of years, keep it up, please, because it's, it's working and people are coming here as a destination and staying. So it's wonderful. Thank you to you and the board.
We definitely feel it's a joint effort. It's not luck. It's, it's definitely, you know, hard work and just commitment to the quality of the facilities and the, and the events. So thank you very much.
Thank you. You have guests here with you tonight. Would you like to introduce them?
I do. We've got a couple of committee members and then our liaison for the city. We've got Virginia Green, Vice Chair of the, of the group, Javier Navarro, he's a committee member, and then Chris Snyder, who is our liaison, so.
Excellent. Thank you for coming tonight and thank you both for your leadership with the top board and the extra work that I know that you've both been doing. It's a pleasure having you on that board and we enjoy the fruits of your hard labor. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Scott, for coming.
Thanks a lot.
Appreciate that. Okay. We have a consent calendar, I think in a moment. Okay.
We'll find out what's left on it.
We'll find out what's left on it, yeah, we'll see. Yeah, it's not too bad. Counselor Bennett, would you like to introduce the consent calendar?
I just wanted to dot a knot here.
Uh huh, okay.
I move the consent calendar with the following polls, 3.3G and 3.3H.
Who seconded, okay, all right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki. Thank you. Long weekend for me too. By Counselor Nanki to approve the consent calendar as presented with the exception of pulling item 3.3G and 3.3H. Are those pulled by specific councilors? Did I hear that or not?
Madam Mayor, I'll pull those, but Counselor Tesler and Counselor Clem will both handle the issues.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar as presented with the, with the polls, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We have several items for a public hearing this evening. And the first one is for A, which has to do with a substantial amendment. And do we have someone to introduce that item? There, we have a staff report, right? All right. Thank you. I'm sorry. Oh, this recorder needs to introduce it first. Thank you. The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the Housing and Community Development substantial amendment to the 2012-2013 One Year Action Plan. All right, thank you. And we do have a staff report. Welcome.
Welcome. Rena Peck, Federal Programs Manager, Urban Development. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Tonight's public hearing is to request council approve an amendment to the 2012-2013 Annual Action Plan. On March 5th, council approved a community development block grant in the amount of $300,000 to Mid Valley Women's Crisis Service for the acquisition of a property at 680 Cottage Street, excuse me. This building was to help them increase the services to, victims of domestic violence, human trafficking, and sexual assault. Mid Valley Women's Crisis Service was unable to acquire that original piece of property due to situations out of their control, but has since secured a new building at 605 Center Street. This public hearing is required under the 2012 Annual Action Plan, Citizen Participation Plan, which gives an opportunity to the public to provide comment. As of today, the staff has not received any comment on this amendment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And I see that we do have, Jane Downing has signed up. Please come to the microphone and we appreciate your, your attendance this evening and of course, always appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members. On behalf of Mid Valley Women's Crisis Service, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. Of course, it was a great disappointment to us that the first building did not follow through, but I have to tell you, there's something very poetic about being the center for hope and safety on Center Street. I'm hoping it's going to be very easy for folks to remember. And grant money is coming in from lots of different places. We just received word today that we received another grant. Community donations continue to pour in. We're so appreciative and we appreciate all the support of you, mayor, and also all of the city staff and city councilors who have made this, this dream come true. So thank you all and, and we appreciate your support and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you. It looks like Counselor Tesler has a question.
Thank you. There's not a map with the staff report. I'm trying to figure out where your cross street is.
It's on Center and Church Street. It's right next to the Greyhound Station.
Oh, okay.
You will, you don't notice it from the outside, but we're hoping we're going to make it a lot more visible. And one of the great things about it is it's going to be a block and a half away from the bus station, which will make us so much more accessible, and three blocks from the courthouse. And we help with a lot of protection orders. So it's going to be a wonderful location and we're really excited about getting involved in First Wednesday and the Friday night events and having folks come on in and see what we're doing and help us even more. So I think it's going to be a wonderful location for us.
Wonderful. And when you mentioned the bus station, you're talking about the Salem Kaiser Transit Station at Courthouse Square?
I am.
Okay, that helps me remember a little better where it is.
Thank you.
Well, sometimes, you know, there's a silver lining when something doesn't work out the way we hoped it would in the beginning and this looks like one of those silver linings. So I'm very pleased for you and for our community. This is sincerely, sincerely an important move for you and we're here to be as helpful as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Clem.
Yes, thank you. Jane, is, is this where the bank used to be?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, all right. And you are still accepting contributions?
We, absolutely.
And can you give us an, an address or a website or how do we make contributions to that?
Absolutely. I wish I had a boot tonight. You can send donations to 795 Winter Street Northeast in Salem, and that's 97301. And then our website is www.hopeandsafety.org.
Oh.
All spelled out, one word, hopeandsafety.org.
Great.
So we just really appreciate that and, and folks in your community have been giving and it just really makes a difference, so. We're going to make it with everyone's help.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. There is no one else that had signed up to testify for this part, for this public hearing. Seeing no one else, I will close the hearing.
Questions?
Oh, we have questions of staff, sorry. Do we have questions of staff?
No.
No, we have no questions of staff. Now I will close the hearing. All right. Counselor Bennett, no, I think, yes, Counselor Bennett, would you like to make the motion for this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. The next item is a council review of specific conditional use site plan review. Will the city recorder please introduce the hearing?
Here, this is a continuing motion, so we'll go straight to the staff report.
All right. We go straight to the staff report. Thank you.
I'm Pamela Cole, Planner Two in Community Development. I'm presenting the staff report for council review of specific conditional use site plan review case 1301 for a property located at 1865 Commercial Street Northeast. I request that the staff report and attachments be entered into the official record. This is a consolidated application for a specific conditional use in type-two site plan review for a 100-foot monopole with 12 antenna. The specific conditional use process is required for a monopole of this height within the IG General Industrial Zone. The monopole and equipment will be located on a leased site on a property 50 feet wide by 130 feet deep. The proposed 100-foot height would allow for additional antenna arrays to be co-located on this tower. The applicant stated that the site would improve quality of service by expanding the area of reliable coverage inside buildings and also provide additional network capacity for increasing data usage. The hearings officer approved this application on March 29th with several conditions. On April 8th, council called up the decision for review. Council opened this public hearing on May 13th and continued it to this evening. The applicant granted a 30-day extension to the state-mandated 120-day decision deadline, and the decision must be final by July 14th. The subject property is located on Commercial Street Northeast between River Street and the Burlington Northern Railroad tracks, designated industrial in the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan and zoned IG General Industrial. The adjacent properties are zoned IG General Industrial, CG General Commercial, and IC Industrial Commercial. The nearest RS Single Family Residential and RM2 Multiple Family Residential Zones are more than 370 feet from the site. This 2011 aerial photo shows the proposed site and the surrounding development. To the west of the leased site are warehouses and shops; to the north and south, single-family dwellings on General Industrial Zone parcels; to the south and southwest, a paint manufacturer; and to the east, a commercial building. The existing single-family dwellings are allowed uses and conforming structures under the General Industrial zoning. The dwellings may continue to be used as residences unless they're converted to non-residential The hearings officer found that the application would meet the specific conditional use approval criteria with conditions of approval. Co-location on existing wireless communication facilities is not feasible because there are no cell towers or tall structures within the service area. The monopole design can support at least one additional carrier. The fenced compound surrounded by landscaping will mitigate visual impacts. The facility will be removed if it ceases to operate, and the monopole is more than 300 feet from all residential and commercial office zones. The hearings officer also found that the application would meet the general conditional use criteria and the type-two site plan review criteria with conditions of approval. The applicant provided photo simulations of the originally proposed location near the Commercial Street frontage of the property. This first simulation shows the proposed facility from the rural metro ambulance facility on the northwest corner of the block. While the proposed 100-foot monopole allowed through conditional use is significantly taller than the existing one-to-two-story buildings on the block, the maximum height for buildings and structures in the General Industrial Zone is 70 feet. The second photo simulation shows the originally proposed facility location near the single-family dwelling at the corner of Commercial and River Streets. The hearings officer imposed several conditions to reduce the impacts on the nearby dwellings as much as possible. These include relocating the tower to the northwest corner of the property to move it as far as possible from the existing dwellings and closer to existing power poles and industrial buildings at the rear; providing a wall or wooden fence and landscaping instead of the standard, which is generally a chain-link fence with side-excerling slats; and also constructing a parking space. In several previous cases for monopoles that required variances to the 300-foot setback from residential or commercial office zones, staff recommended that the monopoles be designed to resemble fir trees to blend with nearby fir trees, and the hearings officer imposed those conditions. In this case, staff did not recommend requiring the monopole to be designed this way or otherwise camouflage, because the facility is more than 300 feet from residential and commercial office zones. There are no other tall trees on the block. The majority of existing development on the block is industrial/commercial. There are tall utility poles on the alley behind the property, and the abutting properties are designated industrial in the Comprehensive Plan and zone General Industrial. The proposed wireless communications facility code amendment scheduled to come before council later this summer would also not require camouflage for this particular location because it's more than 300 feet from all residential, mixed-use, commercial office, and cemetery zones. The current code and proposed code both encourage providers to locate tall monopoles in industrial and commercial zones and more than 300 feet from residential zones. Requiring camouflage for all towers in all zones would eliminate one of the incentives to locate in zones such as General Industrial. The proposed code would require a public hearing for all new support towers. Under current code, if the applicant had proposed a tower up to 70 feet in height with a 10-foot-wide landscaped area around the tower and equipment, it could have been processed as a special use with a type-one site plan review and no opportunity for public comment or a public hearing. On April 15th, the applicant had filed an appeal of the northwest location and the parking space conditions because the property owner had not authorized those features at that time. After resolving the location issues with the property owner, the applicant dropped that appeal and submitted this revised site plan that would comply with the conditions of approval. Therefore, staff recommends that council affirm the hearings officer's decision, including all the conditions of approval. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. We have a couple of people who've signed up to testify. We'll have those, and then we'll go back to staff for questions. Thank you very much. The first person that I will call on is Richard Bush. Welcome to City Council. And in three minutes, you will notice that the red light comes on, which marks the end of your time, but at the end of two minutes, the amber light will, will sign, right?
It's 15 minutes.
Oh.
It's quasi-judicial.
Oh, that's right. I'm on a roll here, aren't I? Okay. Quasi-judicial. You have 15 minutes? 10 minutes?
10 minutes, okay. I can speak quickly, but not that quickly.
All right. I apologize for alarming you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. Richard Bush, I'm an attorney representing AT&amp;T. Address is 22525 Southeast 64th Place in Issaquah, Washington. I wanted to clarify, for the purposes of the record, that first, that we have withdrawn the appeal because we have resolved the site location questions. Second, some of the application criteria include a list of sites within two miles of the proposed location. If you take a look at the map that's included as Exhibit D to one of the application materials, it does identify the sites within the two-mile area. There is one additional site that is located just, just beside the Fred Meyer and La Schwan location. It doesn't appear on that map. It's approximately 60 feet tall. It's about just over a half a mile away from the proposed site. And there are three elevations occupied on that tower right now. The top of that tower has a whip antenna on it. The, the next location, about 20 feet down, has a larger microwave dish. And the final, the third location has what appears to be cellular antennas. And the available location at that particular site is way too low for AT&amp;T's operations at that location to provide the coverage that we're seeking to have from this particular site. So, that additional site does not meet the needs. I frankly am interested in the, the questions or comments that the Ms. Mayor or the city council may have, because when you take a look at the design for the site, it meets the code criteria. It is set back from the view from the front of the property lines. I do have some photos of the area loaded into the computer if you'd like to have, you know, some, take a look at some photos. But, you know, this is basically the, a treeless block of industrial properties. You have tall utility poles to the south and southwest industrial development. You do have the two residences, the three residential structures, two residential, two parcels used as residential purposes immediately adjacent to the proposed site. And the, the tower and equipment would be behind those structures there. So, you know, it appears to us that this is the, a good location, given the gap in coverage that AT&amp;T has or the, the need to provide additional capacity. The goal of this site is to offload capacity from a site to the north and a site to the south. There's a pretty significant gap in between the, among all the sites in the area, and this is kind of centrally located in order to fill in that particular gap.
Yes, are there questions by counselors? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bush, could you talk a little about, maybe just explain it briefly, why 100 feet high rather than 70 or 50 or some other, 100 feet just is so, even looking at the photoshopped image, it, it's really quite high, and I s-
Yes, it is. First, AT&amp;T selected, it's a good question. AT&amp;T selected 100 feet because radio frequency engineers took a look at the coverage provided by the surrounding sites, the, the height of the clutter, if you will. Radio frequencies need, need to be transmitted and received from above buildings, trees, for calls and, and data transmissions that are initiated further away from the site. So if someone is at, you know, closer to the Fred Meyer location and coming toward the site, the, the site needs to clear the clutter, as we call it, the taller trees, the buildings in between, in order to have a good quality communication. And then, as someone travels further south to continue that communication. The second requirement is that the code requires us to provide enough room for co-location. And if another carrier wanted to come in, they would be, the center line would be a minimum of 10 feet further down on the tower, and they would probably have similar needs that AT&amp;T does to clear the clutter and provide good quality communications in the immediate area.
So the, the service range, what are you aiming? I'm, I'm thinking, I mean, we, we all think of the number of bars we get anywhere we are.
Sure.
Will this improve the number of bars I get at the Capitol Building, or will it, will I have to go further downtown?
I want to get my, I would put on my radio frequency cap and answer that question, but I want to go to the map. I don't think it will. I think it's pretty far away. And I'm going to see how good I am at IT. Let's see. Since I use a Mac now, I've forgotten how this works. Would you call up the coverage, the bottom of the PDF? Thank you. Okay. This is a four-page presentation put together by AT&amp;T's radio frequency staff, engineering staff. And what you see there, the green, outlined in red is the area that AT&amp;T wants to provide higher-quality service. The goal is to take, is to change the yellow to green, and I'll flip back and forth really quickly. When you take a look at the map with this site activated to provide solid green service throughout the entire area, prior to having this site activated, there are weaker areas. But the, the primary goal is to offload traffic from the site SM27 that is roughly at the 2:00 position from the proposed site, and also one from the 6:00 position closer into town. So, I don't know where all of the points of interest are located, but you can probably see where the targeted coverage area is. This is a relatively highly-traveled corridor with the two one-way streets, Commercial and Liberty, if I recall correctly. And, you know, these devices that we all, some of us carry now, the data devices, the smartphones, do draw a lot of the capacity from the sites.
The thing I'm, I guess I'm noticing, will we then see another 100-foot tower? I, I see the proposed site SA47, and then I'm looking at SM34 and, no, currently served by those, but it, it shows a need for capacity there. Will there be another 100-foot tower coming into the Cessna neighborhood, or I can't tell which one that is?
Would Cessna be southeast of the site?
Yeah.
For, it depends on the capacity demand. I think I-5 is off to the right, where you see SA, I'm squinting, 18.
Okay.
I'm going to say SA23 off to the far right. That is likely where most of the demand is going to be coming from, from that part of town. If there's a highly-traveled corridor, if there's a high-density event center there, you may see AT&amp;T coming in with another facility. Will it be 100 feet? Hard to tell. Depends on what the radio frequency engineers would say about that.
Okay. Thank you.
But I think a good question would also be, would we expect to see another 100-foot tall tower from another carrier? And hopefully, the answer is no, because they would look to us to provide 80 feet, 90 feet elevation to provide the coverage that they need near SA47.
So your tower actually eliminates the need for another 100, at least one other 100-foot tower, is what you're kind of saying?
That's the theory. Every carrier's design requirements are different, but for the most part, if you have a tower of this height in an area like that, you should be able to have one or two more carriers co-locate on that facility and provide coverage.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam. And that's where I was going to ask, because it says at least one additional, how, how low can they go down before they, they really lose any advantage to? I mean, if they're pseudo-weak and they could add something in there, it'd still be a good thing, would it not?
Yes. It all depends, again, it depends on each carrier's coverage objectives for the site. If you take a look at the site that's up near the Fred Meyer and La Schwan, you, you have what appears to be a cellular carrier at a relatively low elevation by comparison to this. It works for that carrier for whatever reason. But generally speaking, I've been in this industry since 1986. I'm the immediate past president of the Northwest Wireless Association, and I've been in front of many city councils talking about code revisions and what's the public policy behind sites like this. So I, I've talked quite a bit about this. 100-foot in this environment should be able to accommodate two, if not three, additional carriers and meet their needs in the area.
Excellent. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Counselor Claussen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's unlike from the staff presentation, we would potentially allow up to 70-foot buildings in this zone. Does that play into the height of the tower? Is the potential for higher, taller buildings?
Without, having talked to the engineers, my reaction is no, because it would be one structure. Hopefully, it wouldn't be right next door that would block one direction of it. But there's a large expanse of land out there, industrial land out there, that if someone put a 70-foot tall building two blocks away, my expectation is it would not have a serious adverse effect on this particular proposal. Thanks.
Further questions? All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you for having us here tonight.
We have another person who did sign up, and this would be for three minutes, right?
If it's not the Neighborhood Association.
Kava Kazer? We don't know. Does this person represent the Neighborhood Association?
Yes.
Oh, all right, then. You do have more time.
She has five.
Five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Kara Kazer, and I'm representing the Grant Neighborhood Association. This cell tower is actually proposed within Highland, but Grant felt that the need for expressing our concern was outweighed, not coming here, basically. The Grant Neighborhood Association wishes to express its concerns with this cell tower proposed to be built at 1865 Commercial Street Northeast. While we understand the proposed cell tower would meet current zoning and conditional uses, we still find locating a cell tower directly adjacent to and within less than 50 feet of single-family homes to be unacceptable. As noted in the Planning Commission's recommendation to city council to adopt the new wireless tower code, construction of a new tower outside of the right-of-way is the sixth, the very last priority for the city. Therefore, the siting of cell towers such as that proposed here should be considered as a last resort, meaning that there are no other options available. Due to health and livability concerns associated with cell towers being located next to residences, the Grant Neighborhood Association considers this cell tower unacceptable and not in keeping with the city's priorities. Also, although the cell tower is proposed on land zoned as general industrial or IG, and the tax lots adjacent to the proposed cell tower are also zoned IG, the fact is that there are people living in single-family homes adjacent to this place. These are not homes used for residential purposes, these are homes where people are living. These are places where children are living or going to Grant School, they're living there. Having a cell tower immediately next to a home is concerning to us, as cell towers emit noise and high-frequency waves, the health effects of which are not really understood. I think we can also agree that cell towers are some of the most unattractive structures ever conceived. And because this particular lot has no landscaping or trees, there is nothing to disguise the tower, nor provide buffering for the tower's noises. Whatever the zoning may be, the fact is that there are homes within feet of this tower, and several blocks of homes to the north and east beyond that. While these residences may not be zoned as residential, there are still families living in these houses. A cell tower in a neighborhood with homes is not appropriate regardless of how that area is zoned. Unfortunately, this issue only brings up so many other issues about how inadequate and inconsistent Salem is zoned. The city has zoned blocks of single-family homes in inner-city neighborhoods improperly through variances, conditional uses, and whatnot. Because of this mishmash of zoning, the people and quality of life factor gets left out of these cases, much as what is happening with this proposed cell tower. Because we understand that fighting the installation of this cell tower is an uphill battle we will not win, the Neighborhood Association supports the conditions of approval as stated by the hearings officer. Specifically, this includes siting the tower as far away from adjacent single-family homes as possible, painting the pole in earth or leaf tone that has no reflective surfaces, having a side obscuring wall or fence, and have at least a five-foot minimum landscaped area at the northeast, south, and outside perimeter of the side obscuring wall. In addition, we suggest that fast-growing trees be planted within the landscaped area, such as Douglas fir, so that the cell tower will eventually be visually obscured and its noise dampened by this vegetation. In future cell tower sightings, we suggest that cell towers be obscured as much as possible, such as locating towers near tall trees and/or disguising them as trees. We also ask that the city and the hearings officer think carefully about the quality of life impacts before approving last priority siting for cell towers in the future. I would also say that we talked in the neighborhood group about why this tower is so close to downtown, why can't a cell tower be located on top of a building in downtown? And we were literally blocks away from the Equitable Center and other buildings down there. It seems you can get way higher than 100 feet, you can have your sightlines and everything you want. So this just seems unacceptable, especially with the homes literally within an arm's reach of this tower. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there questions? Councilor Bennett?
Thank you. Cara?
Hi.
Hi. I just want to go over again what you said, because I want to understand it. You agree that the zoning is appropriate, if I understood you correctly, and that the conditional use was appropriately done? Did I understand you correctly on that?
According to city code, it's all kosher.
You know that's our guiding principle?
It is.
Yeah.
I know, and that's why we know that this is not, that we can't win this thing, because it's all legal.
Okay.
The conditional use is legal. I think that the Grant Neighborhood Association is very concerned about precedent that this sets. I think we look to areas in our neighborhood, such as Capitol Street?
Yeah.
Where there are a lot of homes that are zoned really weird, and that where things like this could come in, and just based on the fact of somebody put a variance in that property 40 years ago, 30 years ago, last year, that somebody 10 years from now can go in and kind of do whatever they want with it. And that's, that's a concern. So it raises a lot of zoning concerns, but that's why we did state at the end of this, we know that this is legal, we know it's following code. I know that the wireless tower code forthcoming has not yet been set, that might have impacted this, had it, since it is a last priority siting, but that, that is not in place yet.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? All right, thank you so much. Appreciate your coming, and I appreciate your testimony, and always appreciate your work with the Neighborhood Association, too. Thank you. All right, we will go back to the staff. Ms. Cole, would you please come if there are questions from councilors for staff? Councilor Bennett?
Thank you. Did, did city staff or the hearings officer look at a suggestion like the one from Grant Neighborhood regarding fast-growing trees?
I think that's a very good idea, and we have code requirements for buffer yards that require, and for landscaping on properties, that require 40% of the landscaping to be in certain types of vegetation, including trees. So when we do a landscape review, I would be happy to include that as one of the objects that we're looking for in the landscape areas around the closure.
And then the, the color that the tower's being painted, does that conform to what Ms. Kazer suggested? I didn't hear if it was wheat or brown, or I, I missed-
Or leaf green.
Or leaf green, yeah, I wasn't sure.
We typically require for special use cases, which would be the easiest process, to have the painted surfaces be non-reflective, be something in earth tones that blend with the surrounding environment. So it could be gray in this case, to go with the sky typically, they're either gray-
That's a very hopeless.
Gray or cream color. This will be back toward the rear of the site, and the industrial buildings behind it are kind of an off-white color. So just something that's not garish, something that's more natural in tone. And that's a condition that we put on conditional use cases for these all the time.
And that's on this one?
Yes, it's included in the conditions. I didn't specifically mention that in staff report, because we were highlighting other aspects, but it is included.
Okay, but it's there. Are the fast-growing trees there?
They aren't, but that is something that we could consider.
Okay. And then could you, if it's, if it's available, could we just look at that zoning map again? I want to compare it to my memory of it, I guess.
The IG is in gray, the RM2 is in orange to the right, and the RS in yellow.
You had a term for the residential units, or homes that are in that area, and could you again describe what situation is with them? Are they, are they conditional uses, or what are they in an IG zone?
They're actually special uses.
Special uses.
And existing residential dwelling in a commercial or general zone, they have some special use criteria or standards, and those basically say that they're conforming structures and they can remain in residential use until converted to other use.
But their ultimate goal is IG use?
Yes, and the designation in the comprehensive plan is industrial as well.
And, and it's been that way for some time?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly when, but it is something that we do see in a lot of the areas where we have zoned and designated certain properties. Sometimes they're very small lots that have existing single-family residential or other residential development.
But, but there's no RS zoning in this particular block of buildings?
No, sir.
This is IG zone?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I did want to point out one thing that she'd mentioned about the landscaping and the fencer wall. The conditions that we applied and recommended to the hearings officer were to have a more substantial wall around the facility to cut down on noise. That was my primary objective with that condition, because we had heard that as a complaint with previous cases. And also, most of the equipment is going to be located in a prefabricated shelter, so that's also going to cut down on the noise. The hearings officer did change that condition slightly to allow a wooden fence, because the applicant was concerned that a concrete block wall or something like that would intrude into the five-foot landscaped area and reduce the area available for landscaping, and make the lease site wider, which would take up more of the property owner's property. We wanted to be able to leave him some room to potentially develop other uses on that property. So we were trying to write the conditions to minimize the size of the facility.
Then, just one final, I'm sorry. There was a condition that requires removal of the tower within six months after, after it's no longer in use. Are there then notice requirements of, of the owner or the land, the landlord, I guess, to alert you? How, how will you know it's not in use? Those things don't-
We always-
Look like they're doing anything, right?
Right. That's a standard also for the special uses, and we always include that in a conditional use case to notify the applicant that that's required. And it's not only this applicant, but subsequent property owners, subsequent people who take on those leases, and it's an expectation. We're also including that in the proposed code amendment.
But how do we know? Just-
We would have to rely on someone reporting it. We don't go out and check them, so.
There's no requirement then on AT, AT&amp;T or the landowner to notify us? There's not some sort of obligation, affirmative obligation on their part to alert us they've stopped using it?
Not specifically.
Okay.
We expect them to comply with the condition.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have questions from Councilor Nanki, then Clausen, then Tesler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question in regards to that last statement, it would be when it was no longer in use for anyone that's potentially co-located on as well, correct?
Right, so it would apply to future co-locations as well. So any facility on a tower, basically whenever we have approvals for antennas on any location, we put that in as a condition saying, when it's been out of use for six months, it needs to be removed.
Just be more so that if AT&amp;T elected for some reason not to stay on it, and they could lease that out to someone else, then that would still be in use according to how our regulations are set.
Right.
Have any poles been removed?
Not that I know of, not-
Okay.
And, and it is something that came up in early discussions on the code amendment. Some of the neighborhoods asked us to be sure that we have that in the code, and we do have provisions that require that in the code amendment.
Then two more, if I may?
All right.
The residential dwellings, are they able to be rebuilt if they had some incident as a special use or not?
That's correct, that's correct. That provision in code was, I believe specifically, in, put in the code so that people with residences in these situations could rebuild if they were damaged or destroyed.
And then final question, have we quantified Oregon gray? Because I recognize the color immediately most of the winter, and I'm sure we could figure that color out and make most of it that way, and we'd almost be invisible to travelers.
Well, if we have a Pantone chip available, I'll take that.
All right, Councilor Clausen?
Thank you. Another question on the existing single-family residences, they can sell and remain a single-family residence?
That's correct. It's only if the use is changed to a non-residential use that they-
If it went to an office, it couldn't go back to a single-family residence.
Correct.
Okay. The other question is, you couldn't put more single-family residences on an existing IG?
No.
Thanks.
Councilor Tesler?
Last but least, I was recently fooled by a cellphone tree. I was taking a picture of a bird on a branch in a tree and was pretty surprised to find out it wasn't a tree when I got closer to it. So I was curious that, did you say there were trees in the area or not?
There are a couple of street trees on the property, they're not as tall, though. And I could show you that picture if you'd like.
Yeah.
So they're significantly shorter.
Okay, so there's nothing, I mean, I have 100-foot trees in my yard, and they're pretty darn big. So this is 100-foot tall tower?
Right.
Yeah, that's a big, that's a big tree. Okay, that's the end of my questions. I was just wondering if it could be turned into a tree. They look like a tree, they really do.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, good. Okay, are there further questions for staff? Councilor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pamela, do we know from the applicant what they intend to do with the balance of the property? Have they indicated that at all? I'm not, one of the concerns I have is cellphone towers go up and then somebody builds a house next to it. So, not that they can on IG property, but 100-foot, and what do we know that helps us understand that the tower won't fall over on somebody? 70-foot tower generally lands on the property line, 100-foot tower lands on something, so.
The applicant hasn't told me what the property owner intends to do with the property, other than he at one point did intend to potentially purchase the adjacent properties and develop all three together. We couldn't consider that in our decision, because it hasn't happened yet. The, in the code amendment process, we've talked with our consultant about tower construction and safety issues, and these are engineered not to fall. So we don't consider that as one of the criteria.
And we could, council could further condition this to plant trees and/or to make this camouflage so that it eventually blends in with the trees trying to catch up with it in height.
You could, yes. I would suggest the condition specifically to say that those trees need to be planted within the landscape area that we've already approved, that's immediately around the enclosure and the fence. Otherwise, it would reduce the property owner's ability to develop other portions of the site. If the property owner came in with a building permit and a site plan review proposal today, depending on the use, we would have other landscaping requirements for that.
And we could also, council could also condition it to talk about notification of non-use anymore?
Yeah, you could extend that condition and, with more specific language.
You'd indicated a minute ago, answering one of the councilor's questions, that there was something going to be put in code with regard to cellphone towers, but it's not in this one.
The requirement that it be removed within six months is something that we're carrying forward from the special use standards into the proposed code amendments for all-
So that would be, that's anticipated staff, in the anticipated code change that's coming to us anyway, is that correct?
That's correct. And again, when you see that, you could potentially ask us to amend that with more specific language.
Sure, but having it here would, would make it at least intent-wise consistent with what staff's thinking anyway.
Yes, that's correct.
Neighborhoods are thinking. Did Highland Neighborhood Association comment on this at all?
No, they did not.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Councilor Thomas?
Yes, thank you. My question, I heard something by the first presenter regarding microwave frequencies or something to that effect. So my question is, would this have a high impact on the environmental quality, or have some type of health impacts to the individuals who live in that area?
The FCC in 1996 Telecommunications Act stated that local jurisdictions aren't supposed to consider the health impacts of the radio frequency emissions in our decisions, to the extent that those emissions comply with the FCC regulations. So we do not use that as a criterion.
Okay, so would it have an impact?
I'm sorry?
Would it have an impact?
I should not answer that question, because of the FCC's rulings on that.
I think maybe-
He gets rebuttal.
Yeah, you can cover it on rebuttal if you want to do that, okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you, Councilor Thomas. Other questions from council, councilors? All right. Okay, Ms. Cole, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we now have rebuttal, and I understand that's five minutes.
Thank you, Richard Bush again. To address the question about health impact, I think the honest answer is nobody knows. You take a look at the research that industry has, and it says there's no implications, no impact. You take a look at some other information that's on the internet, and you hear all sorts of stories that people haven't been able to scientifically validate. So I think the honest answer is there is no answer, because it's hard to prove or disprove some, whether, negative. The reality of the transmissions are that the antennas will be at 100 feet, and they will be installed designed to broadcast outward, and they would not be installed designed to broadcast downward. So the majority of the radio frequency emissions will be transmitted outward toward the projected areas that you saw on the map that we went- areas that you saw on the map that we wanted to have covered. The output level of these antennas are relatively low compared to other sources of radio frequency emissions. I don't know if you've ever been to an AM or FM radio transmitting site, you know, where the emissions are far stronger than what these put out. These antennas are put on top of office buildings, kind of medium complexes, places where people are for long periods of time, all the time. And we started this industry with stronger technology, with stronger emissions in 1983, 1984. And here we are, how many years later, and there's no proven scientific evidence that these devices are causing problems. But I, we don't have the answer. And staff is correct. The Federal Telecommunications Act does prohibit us from considering that as a decision criteria. And honestly, I think the industry may have done itself a disservice by relying upon that federal law and not actually providing answers. And that's why I came up to answer the question.
All right.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
That's it? That's your rebuttal?
Yes, it is.
All right. Do they have opportunity for further questions of him? Questions by councilors? Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To the question of making it look like a tree, I agree with Counselor Tesler. There's one out in South Salem, there's one over in northeast Salem in the county, that they look pretty darn incredible. Once you know it's not a tree, you can tell. But how much money are we talking about? Is that ridiculous? Is that incredibly onerous if we tried to go that direction or? I'm looking for a gut check feel on that, if that's okay.
I don't have the answer. I think for the structure itself, it multiplies it fourfold or fivefold.
In cost?
In cost.
Okay.
But on this particular site, the practical challenge we have is space. You know, it's close enough to the property line that if we made it look like a tree, it would intrude on the property to the north. And we don't have the right to do that. And then, it would also impact how many carriers could co-locate on the structure. Because if we're at 100 feet, you want it to look tapered. You don't want it to look like a bottle brush is chopped off at the top. So, then, we could do that, but I don't think you'd want that. So, then, that means the antennas have to come down or the structure goes higher. And it's a trade-off. Anytime you change one design element, it's like, like I said in the presentations, it's like pushing on a balloon. If you push on one end, you're going to affect the rest of the structure. So, if we decide to make it a tapered top, then you have to bring the antennas down 10, 15, 20 feet, which that means, are they going to be fully out or are they going to be closer in? If they're closer in, you have to take up another, what we call RAD center, which then reduces all of the, you know, eliminates all of the co-location opportunities. So, it's a topic that's a very good discussion to have when you're looking at the code. Stealth site is not always the right option. What I think, what I've talked about for years is well-integrated sites. You should pick a site design plan so it's integrated to the area where you're going to put it. Here, it's an industrial area where you have tall utility poles down the street, you have all sorts of paint canisters, you have tires, you, all sorts of things. If you put a tree way out in the middle of nowhere, you'll notice it. And some of the trees are good, some of them aren't so good. Trust me.
Yeah, I agree. I've seen some before.
Trust me on that. So, in this area, my personal opinion is that this is probably the right solution. Tree probably wouldn't work so well. Flagpole, yeah, probably won't work so well. Thick, you know, they're 36 inches in diameter. And then, you have to put a comparably sized flag on it, which then means the flag would intrude on the adjoining property owner's property. It would be large and if the wind picks up, it whips. It'll make noise. So, that in and of itself isn't a solution. And, exactly. And so on and so on. So, for this particular location, my personal opinion is this is probably the right structure for the property. Thank you.
Counselor Tesler?
One last question for you. I just had a horrible thought. You can't put a billboard on this, can you?
Darn. No. No. I believe one of the...
A triple moneymaker. Yeah. I mean, you know...
No Huskies, did you say?
I just wondered if you could put a billboard on here because that would not...
The answer is no.
Be good. Okay.
No, and I don't know if this particular code has a regulation against signs, but most codes, wireless codes, say no signs other than what's required by law.
Further questions from councilors? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing. And Counselor Bennett, would you like to make a motion?
Not really. Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation with the additional condition that the, a condition that there be fast-growing trees within the approved landscape area.
Second.
And...
Or not yet.
Not yet. I'm trying to think. And that there, and I'm not sure, and maybe the city attorney can just help me, some sort of affirmative obligation on the property owner to alert us if usage stops at this site. I'm not too concerned about the carriers. I'm more concerned we would end up with a site with a pole.
If you make the, if you make the motion, we'll bring you back appropriate language.
Great.
Because again, this is...
I know what I'm after here.
This is your tentative oral decision. You will bring a written decision back to you at the next meeting.
Oh, excellent. Good. I had to get it right. Then, I would like to have a more affirmative statement of the 60-day notification to the city of discontinued use at the site.
60 days is the period?
60.
60 from discontinuance of use?
Yeah.
60 days prior to the date that the use will be discontinued?
Whatever it says now, right?
Yeah, whatever it is now.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Could you please restate the motion?
I was afraid you were going to say...
You knew I would ask.
I moved the staff recommendation with the additional conditions that fast-growing trees be required within the approved landscape area and that an additional condition be added that requires the landlord to provide city notice of discontinued use within 60 days.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clem to move staff recommendation with the addition of the requirement of the fast-growing trees within the plan for the cell tower and that the land, and a condition that the landowner would notify the city in the case, within 60 days in the case of the business no longer using the cell tower.
Right.
Okay.
Just a comment, Madam Mayor, if I may. As Ms. Kizer and I discussed there briefly during her testimony, this complies. That we have really, I think, a very difficult choice if you're opposed to this tower in this location because of the presence of single-family homes in an IG area. This complies almost completely and perfectly with our land use law and it makes it just, you know, it might feel good to vote no, but it would really be unfair both to the applicant and to, and be reversible. I'm sure not appeal to say no in this case. But I hope that the kind of discussion that Ms. Kizer brought to the table and also the added comments from, and questions from the other members of the councilor, including Counselor Thomas's question, which I think runs to the heart of the kind of emails I get about towers, can be part of the broader discussion we'll undergo when we hit that change in the code, which I think, just given what happened with this one, would indicate that this is going to be a reasonably controversial discussion. There's a lot of concern out there. Mr. Bush hit it right on the head, I thought, when he said they may have done themselves, the industry, a disservice in the early 80s when they created a federal block on discussion of, of health concerns that people may have. And I know we can't get there, but I know it's the kind of discussion I have coming at me. I hope we'll have some, whatever's known out there in this area available to us just to understand what's going on in terms of health-related issues relative to these towers.
Okay. Is there further discussion? We'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you, with Counselor Thomas voting no. All right. We have a third public hearing. Would the recorder please introduce item 4C?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding ordinance bill number 613 relating to the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, repealing SRC 64.015 through 64.240, creating new sections SRC 64.001 through 64.030, and amending the Salem Area Comprehensive Policies Plan.
Thank you. And we have a staff member here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, mayors and councilors. My name's Lisa Anderson Ogilvy and I'm a planner in the Community Development Department. And I'm here tonight to present the proposed amendments to Salem Revised Code, Chapter 64, and the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan. And I requested the staff report and its attachments be entered into the official record. So, for a little background on this amendment, it was initiated by City Council with first reading in February of this year and you recommended that it go to public hearing at Planning Commission. They held their public hearing in April and they recommended that you advance the code amendment to second reading for enactment. So, the amendment tonight deals with Chapter 64. This is our chapter on comprehensive planning. So, this chapter tells us, what is the comp plan? How do we amend the comp plan? How do we amend the comprehensive plan map? It also deals with neighborhood associations and it has a section on neighborhood plans as well. So, we won't be touching all of those sections tonight, but I'll go through and let you know what we're proposing to amend. So, first off, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about what is our comprehensive plan? And it's our vision for what the city should be. It has our goals and policies regarding housing, jobs, parks, streets, facilities, where we should cite our schools and how we should manage our growth. We're required to have a comprehensive plan by the state and it's required to match the statewide planning goals or implement the statewide planning goals. We've had a comprehensive plan for a very long time, even before the state required us to have one. We've had long-range plans that were somewhat of comprehensive plans as far back as the 1940s, which is pretty interesting. And so, I have some maps or some pictures here of different things that make up the comp plan. But currently, if you look at Chapter 64, it's not that clear what is our comprehensive plan. So, we want to amend that, Chapter 64, so it can be very clear what we're talking about when we say our comprehensive plan. So, the first thing we've done is we've defined what are the components of the comprehensive plan. First, we have a comprehensive policies plan. So, that's the document that you might see a planner hold up and say, this is the comp plan. Right now, our current version's got a purple cover. So, if you've seen that, that's our policies document and that's where it lists our goals and policies. But there's other things that make up our comprehensive plan. We have an urban growth boundary that you've seen on our maps. We have a comprehensive plan map, public facilities plan, our transportation system plan, our recently adopted park system master plan, and of our neighborhood plans that are adopted, the goals and policies portions. When you take all those things together, all those components, that's what makes up our comprehensive plan. And so, the amendment will clearly lay that out for you. And then, it also talks about some supporting documents. These aren't part of the comprehensive plan, they're not land use documents, but they have policies in them that help support our comprehensive plan. Those include our airport master plan, the historic preservation plan, the financing portions of our transportation system plan, we have supporting documents of the public facilities plan, and also includes the aspirational portions of our neighborhood plan. Another part of the amendment tonight will adopt our comprehensive plan, the digital version, as our official map. This is a pretty big deal because now we can put it on our website, we can print copies for customers and neighborhood associations. People ask for this a lot. They ask us a lot, can I have a copy of your comprehensive plan map? And it's not digital, so we have to say no. But now, we can say yes once this has been adopted. And this will bring this in line with our zoning map, which has been digital and been available on our website for a very long time. Another part of the amendment tonight deals with the comprehensive plan change criteria. So, this is the criteria when somebody applies and they say, I want to change my comprehensive plan designation. Oftentimes, it's coupled with a zone change, but this is the criteria that just deals with the comprehensive plan map change. Our current criteria requires somebody to meet one of the four criteria listed, so they have some options to pick from. First, if they have a proposed use, they have to analyze other sites in the area and say why those sites aren't appropriate for the use. If they don't have a use, they can look at changes in the area and that change can be a capital improvement, so something big like a freeway interchange has been built, or maybe other people have changed their, their map designation. But if, if those two things haven't happened and you don't have a proposed use, it's really hard to change your comprehensive plan designation right now. We most often see this with people that have a vacant building. The building was built for a use, it was used for a while and that use went away. And now, they have a vacant building that's been empty for a year, two years, five years. And they say, I really need to change the designation to market this property better. I really can get a user in here if I have a different designation. But none of these criteria fit because they don't have a use and there haven't been major changes in the area. So, we've crafted some new criteria that we thought would get at that issue. And so, that's the first one listed here. It's a criteria that they have to prove that what they're proposing is equally or better-suited designation. So, they don't have to have a proposed use, there don't have to have been major changes in the area, but instead, the burden's on them to say, you know, the designation I'm proposing, it's equal to what's there or it's even better and I can, I can prove that. And so, that will give people an opportunity to make that change without having a proposed use or having major changes in the area. And we think that's a really good thing. We've also left in a criteria for alteration in circumstances. So, if there have been social, economic, or demographic changes in the area, there's a criteria that they could address instead. And then, we've introduced a criteria for when there's a conflict between the comprehensive plan map designation and the zoning designation. And it gives us factors to consider for when the zoning is the better fit to change the comp plan to match the zoning. We've kept in the additional criteria for comp plan map change, so they'll always have to show that the property's capable of being served by facilities or is already currently served, that its logical urbanization of our land has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, so with all those documents that I talked about previously, has to meet the statewide planning goals, and they have to show that it's in the public interest. So, those criteria are currently there today and we've just tweaked them a little bit. Another part of the amendment tonight has to do with the neighborhood planning section of Chapter 64 and there's, there's two amendments there. The first would allow our notifications to be electronic. So, we've taken out the language that specifically said the city will mail you a notice on certain issues. It's more in line with our current policy and our current city budget for mailing and just allows us to take advantage of electronic resources. And then, we've added in criteria that states clearly how two neighborhoods can combine into one by having their boards vote and notify in the city. This ordinance will also adopt the historic preservation plan as a support document of the comprehensive plan. You may recall that this was completed in 2010 and was presented to City Council at that time. It was adopted by the Historic Landmarks Commission as their work plan, but it wasn't formally adopted as a support document. Council did take the action of adopting a new historic preservation chapter, so updating the rules and regulations for historic properties in 2010 based on this plan. There were five major goals in this plan and four of them have already been completed and the fifth one is almost done. And this ordinance will also readopt the urban service area map. So, this map is the area in Salem where we have required facilities in place or we've committed financially to having those in place. So, it's the areas in this map shown in green. And over time, we've readopted this map, but we didn't do it correctly, so this ordinance will clear that up. And then, the comprehensive policies plan, so again, the document that just has our goals and policies in it, we're making some changes to that, we're going to update some terms, we're going to reflect that we've adopted that historic preservation chapter back in 2010. And then, we've removed some information, so if you see in the ordinance, a lot of stuff crossed out, it's because it's actually in Chapter 64 and it doesn't need to be in both And there's some testimony, West Salem Neighborhood Association submitted a letter of support at the Planning Commission hearing and that was attached to your staff report for tonight. They've submitted another letter for tonight's hearing, which should be in your packets in support of the amendment and that's the only written testimony we've received. And therefore, the Planning Commission recommends that you adopt the facts and findings of the staff report and advance the gross ordinance to second reading for enactment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. All right, we have two people who have signed up to testify. Josh Pollock, thank you. Josh, I apologize, I know your last name as well as I know my own, and I'm having trouble reading. I could put on my glasses, that would solve a lot of the problems. Josh, welcome. And do you represent a neighborhood association, and does she have special time for that? Or how do we deal with that under a hearing of this sort?
Yes, I'm representing the neighborhood association.
Since this is citywide, it may be a little different, but we'll see what...
Legislative, they get five minutes.
Five minutes?
Thank you.
All right, welcome.
Again, my name is Josh Pollock. I am resident of Ward Eight. I'm here as a land use chair for West Salem Neighborhood Association. As stated before, well, I appreciate an opportunity to speak to you, Mayor, the council. As Steph had mentioned, we did submit two letters, but I wanted to come over here and just reiterate the fact that we couldn't be more thrilled.
Oh, good.
This is because of two things. First of all, well, four points. The notice format, because the West Salem Neighborhood Association is a town hall meeting, anything we vote on has to be on the agenda, and because last, at our annual meeting, we already changed our bylaws to accept electronic notification. So we're thrilled that the city is in, now we're both on the same aspects there. The second one I want to point out is that it was a concern that in eliminating, in reorganizing this, they eliminated the neighborhood association as ability to amend their own officially recognized neighborhood plan. And so I spoke to staff about that, and we came, they came, the rationale for that was that first, the determination that neighborhood associations are not actually legislative bodies, but in fact, we are, according to your code, independent organizations that act in a advisory capacity. So in that aspect, we agree with that. The next one was the city staff and city council were speaking about administrative efficiency. Well, when you have nineteen possibly, maybe, or is it nineteen or eighteen now? If you have eighteen neighborhood associations, and of course, not all of them have their neighborhood plan officially recognized, but if they were to come by and want to amend these things, well, once you start some kind of action like that, you have statutory timeframes, and I can understand how the city council and staff will be concerned that they have all this coming at them, and how do they control that and meet their criteria according to state and city guidelines. And then, and then the last is that the city staff has indicated that they will be, they have, they didn't say will, they intend to take a look at the neighborhood plan code 64.300 to 64.335, which actually doesn't even speak on how to amend the neighborhood plan, but they would address that. Currently, they indicate that, that if we were to amend it, that we would actually, that the goals and policies of a neighborhood plan would actually fall under a major plan amendment in the comprehensive plan. And anything as supporting documents would be a minor. So in that aspect, it's not like it can't be amended, it's just that we would go to staff or the city council and speak to them first, and explain our rationale, and then in, and so it's not that it curtails our ability, it's just we have to communicate beforehand and give, and make our case to our representatives in this case, well, Chuck Bennett and Dan Clem. The other thing that I can't, that our, many of our members, long-term members of West Salem couldn't be thrilled about, was the fact that the change, one of the amendments is going to officially incorporate a recognized neighborhood associated plan into the comprehensive plan. That gives a neighborhood plan better weight. And even, and even the fact that to amend the goals and policies is under a major plan, it again, gives a lot of weight. So before, we could be looked at as a guideline, now it's actually, it gives it, in other words, a lot more credibility when a developer goes to take a look at the comprehensive plan, you really have to look at the neighborhood plan, goals and policy as well. Well, that, oh, and the last thing is that SRC 300, the legislative decision-making and quasi-judicial legislative procedure, will remain to give us a voice, public comment, public testimony, and appeal. So even though we don't have standing, we still, in overall process, we will have a voice, and that will remain. That's it for me, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions of Ms. Pollock by councilors? All right, appreciate your coming, and always appreciate the work that you do with your neighborhood association.
Thank you.
Tremendously, thank you. All right, Jeff Tross is here.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Members of the council, good evening. Jeff Tross, 1720 Liberty Street, Southeast, Salem 97302. Appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight, and thanks to Mr. Tosh for writing my name down on the sign-up sheet, so that you'd be able to recognize me. I'm here to support the amendments that are proposed to Chapter 64, and especially the fact that they're coming to you in advance of the larger UDC process. This is extremely important for these changes to be made as quickly as possible. I also want to express my thanks to Glenn and Lisa for giving me the opportunity to speak with these while the amendments were still in draft form, so we could create, so I could get a better understanding of what was taking place. My major interest is in the minor plan map amendment criteria. As Lisa explained to you a moment ago, that's 64025E2. Changes to those criteria are long overdue. They are overdue since the day they were adopted approximately 20 years ago. They've needed changing for all this time, so that makes it even of greater importance that they come to you at this time. I urge you to support these changes as well, adopt them as quickly as possible, and I would also ask you to make them effective as quickly as possible, so any pending proposals can be brought to you under the new criteria and under the new provisions rather than the old ones. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from councilors?
Thank you.
All right, well, we do appreciate your appearance, and obviously appreciate the work that you were doing along with our staff.
It was minor compared to the work they did, but it's nice of you to say that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we will now, I believe, have questions of staff. Okay, Counselor Claussen, and then Counselor Nanki.
Could you help me to understand the, does this, do these amendments change the status of a neighborhood program, or is it more just a normal neighborhood plan, or does it more formalize the status?
It just makes it clear, but it doesn't change it. So they've always been adopted with the goals and policies portion of a neighborhood plan is part of the comp plan. And then there's a lot of, we call it aspirational in the PowerPoint, so they do maps about what they want the zoning to be in the future and that kind of stuff, and that's never been part of the comp plan, but it's in the neighborhood plan, so it's clearly stated separately now that that's a support.
So is it more, kind of, it's easier to find this stuff and understand how it's tied in to the comp plan?
Hopefully, yeah.
As opposed to changing the true weight of...
Right, it doesn't change the weight of it, I think...
Yeah, the current chapter is extremely murky. And so the purpose of this was to clarify the structure of our comprehensive plan and to give, you know, a clear, logical, consistent, understandable set of criteria for looking at major and minor amendments. But the current chapter is extremely difficult to understand. I mean, it took me, what, about a month to parse it apart? And, I mean, once you parse it apart, it all does fit together, but it's really very difficult to figure out. And so the purpose of this was to let, you know, citizens who aren't lawyers who've been practicing for 25 years, to be able to look at our chapter and figure out what it means.
Okay, so it kind of just ties all the pieces together to have one spot to go to and really understand what makes up the entirety of the comprehensive plan?
That's right.
As opposed to changing weights of individual components or pieces?
That's correct.
And then, as you said, the major and minor amendments clarifies that and changes the criteria to some extent in those. All right, thank you.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick clarifications, then. So say a neighborhood association who has not previously had a plan develops one, we don't have to change anything, they're incorporated by reference as a secondary? Or would we have to go through some process besides acknowledging their plan?
The chapter has current criteria for how you adopt a neighborhood plan, and we're not proposing to change that section, and that's what Josh Lee was talking about. We told her we intend to, in the future, change that section, but it does lay out criteria, how many meetings they have to have, how it goes through Planning Commission, how their boards vote on it, how, so we have that laid out. So like the neighborhood plans we're working on right now, when they're done with them, we have a process they can go through to have those adopted.
But as far as the comp plan itself, if I look at it, oh, and here's another neighborhood association, I have to enter that in? It's already incorporated by what we have in...
It will need to be listed into Chapter 64 when we adopt it.
Yeah.
Okay, that was a question.
Yes.
You'll have to take action to do that. As the West Salem representative testified, they're not a legislative body, only the council can adopt something into the comprehensive plan.
It would be an amendment to 64005G. When you add a new neighborhood plan, that's where you would add that.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, we discussed at a work session a few weeks ago on the housing needs and economic opportunities, and how that could be incorporated if we ever adopted something. So is that something that would be in the future, or...
That would be in the future.
Okay. But do we have a system in place to actually be able to put that in once it comes in?
Yes, we have, so it's very clear now how you amend the comprehensive plan itself, and the map lists out the criteria and the process.
Excellent.
Yes.
Okay, further questions? I have a question. Ms. Ogilvy, you mentioned during your first presentation that this now provides that if, that two neighborhoods could join, two neighborhood associations could join into one. Why would we want to simply, why would we specify the number two? Perhaps if three or four chose to combine, would they then be outside of this revised...
I have to look at the language, and maybe Brady... Brady Rogers is here, and I think he can help with that, but I think we're...
I would just like, I would just hope that we're not limiting or causing extra work to ourselves. Mr. Rogers, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors. My name's Brady Rogers. I'm the administrator of the Neighborhood Enhancement Division for the city. The number two, I think it just came up because we had two that wanted to join. We certainly, the intent is, if neighborhoods do want to join, we would facilitate that and help them do so.
The ordinance says for two or more neighborhood associations to consolidate into a single entity. It was contemplated that there could be more than two.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate the clarification. All right, were there other questions for staff? All right, thank you very much. All right, then I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion to present?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I move the staff recommendation.
It's...
It was like a tie?
It was a tie, all right.
I think we should give it to the older one.
It was moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Tesler, to move staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. Our, yes?
In regards to that, just, what is the timing on the finality of this then, and how soon could it be enforced and effective?
Ordinances are enforced 30 days after their effective date unless there's an emergency clause, and I don't recommend that you add an emergency clause to this ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
Our fourth public hearing is item 4D. Would the city recorder please? No, this is a continuation, so I believe Counselor Bennett has a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the Salem River Crossing public hearing be continued to the June 24, 2013 council meeting, and that the record be held open for written testimony only. I further move that the record for written testimony be closed at 5:00 PM on Friday, June 21, 2013, so that the council may have time to review the record in its entirety prior to the June 24, 2013 meeting.
Second.
Counselor Bennett, I believe you wanted to keep the hearing open for questions from staff, because that would be further oral testimony.
Well, my script does not say that, so... Who ever wrote my script?
I didn't write your motion, but I think you might, I think you might want to add that.
Then now we become the improv theater, right? Okay.
If the second would withdraw his second, I think you can simply add that to your motion and then get a new second.
Okay, thanks. And that city council have the opportunity at the June 24 meeting to ask questions of staff.
Second.
Now you're good to go.
Excuse me, just a second.
Did you just say?
No, questions of staff.
Questions of staff, fine. Don't, not public testimony.
Public never had an opportunity to question.
No. But the written can come in, but no further...
All right, there is a motion on the floor. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clem to continue the public hearing until June 24, and to receive written testimony, which will be due at the end of the day, no later than the end of the day, June 21.
That's correct, 5:00 PM, June 21.
By the end of June 21. And was there another part to your motion?
That we'd be allowed to ask questions of staff.
That we'd be allowed to ask questions of staff at the June 24.
Fourth.
Hearing, thank you.
And we want them to answer those questions.
Okay, we got that?
Okay.
All right, all those, is there discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. All right, I think we should have a little break, a little stretch for just about five minutes.
Okay.
Okay. And we're picking up with the special orders of business. We had two items that we had pulled from the consent calendar, and they are items 3.3G and H.
Take H first.
Councilor Bennett, would you like to introduce either or both? I'm not sure if you wanted to do both at the same time tonight?
No, Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and do item G, and Council Clem will do item H. This is the enterprise zone extension relative to the Garmin expansion. Want to just highlight this, and I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
All right. It's been, it's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Nanki. And is there discussion by council? All right. I'd like to take a moment to jump in and say a few words about our economic development activity. And first of all, to kind of take everybody back a couple of years, if you remember when this council began two years ago, shortly after I became mayor and several others joined the council at the same time, we decided that we needed to really focus our, our goal-setting and focus our economic development activities. And we pledged at that time to really take more ownership over the city's economic development activity, and to be more specific and more strategic about our economic development activities. And at the time, and in conjunction with SEDCOR, and in conjunction, obviously, with other community partners, we identified five areas where we specifically thought that we would have the greatest likelihood of return on our investment, and those were in aviation and avionics, metals, metal manufacturing and fabrication, in the fields of medical, both in medical service providers such as hospitals and clinics and laboratories, but also in, in medical device and medical equipment supply. And a fourth area in agriculture, and the fifth in renewable energy and technology. And the reason I wanted to, to speak tonight about this is because we have worked diligently, and I really want to pay high compliment to city manager Linda Norris, and to our urban development department, John Wales, and Doug Rocks, and everyone who works in urban development, but also everyone working in all of the departments. Public Works is a big part of the economic development activity, and certainly our planning department headed by Vicky Woods and Glenn Gross. It really takes all of us working together as a team, and I'm so really pleased and proud that that's what we've been doing for the last almost two and a half years now. And in recent months, we have had some significant successes, significant announcements. As, as Councilor Bennett just mentioned, in Garmin, that's in aviation and avionics. We also, on our agenda, the next thing has to do with Hanard Machinery, and that's in metals manufacturing. In the area of medical, we just recently broke ground out on Kubler for a new Salem clinic, which will be employing more physicians and more, more support staff, and making a sizable investment there in terms of, of the building. And we also have just been reading in the newspaper, and will be coming to this council, the Salem Hospital bond sale for $20 million, which will be used to upgrade several of their facilities and also build some new ones. So in medical, we're certainly surging forward. And in agriculture, we just recently had the, the announcement about AgriPac, moving their corporate headquarters into Salem, building a corporate headquarters building, building in conjunction with another company, a cold storage facility which we know was badly needed for their efficiencies. And that's going to create new jobs in construction, and then also permanent jobs with, with Norpac. So I'm just very, very pleased and very encouraged, and I just want to say to the council for your, your solid support for that economic development plan, and for staff and your solid support and your, your years of work. This didn't just start, you know, two years ago, and I recognize that. Years of work with these very important local businesses that are, are here because they've been here for years. And our every, every hope is that they will stay here with us, and we, I know staff has worked very hard to ensure that as well. So I just wanted to take a few minutes and, and be able to really kind of look back down memory lane here, it's a little short, actually, two years and five months. And I think this is the, kind of a tipping point. I know there are more things in the works. I'm just very, very proud and very appreciative of the way our city, again, proves it's a collaboration capital, working with the private sector, working with Business Oregon, working throughout the community with, with businesses and industries. So I'm just a very happy mayor tonight. Thank you very much. All right. Other comments by councilors? We have a motion on the floor then to adopt the staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, Councilor Clem, are you, and now, are you introducing?
I am.
All right.
With your permission. Yes, I'd like to move staff, staff recommendation on item 3.3H regarding Hanard Machine.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilor Clem and seconded by Councilor Claussen. Is there discussion? Councilor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This too, is an important part of our economic development strategy in that this extends by state law the property tax abatement for the expansion at Hanard Machine on 7th in West Salem. Been there 35 years, they're expanding. And this is an important equipment manufacturer, handles agro products handling equipment where it's, where it's processed by local and regional food processing plants. So very excited to also make the motion to do, as you talked about a minute ago, in West Salem, which is a, a very unique area where you have a great blend of manufacturing, and you have a great blend of, of a, of a housing district right next to Walker Middle School. By the way, Hanard Machine has let West Salem Little League use the ball field, its property for ball fields for the last 30 years that I'm aware of. So a good community partner, expanding, adding eight to 12 more jobs. And as streets are improved in the local area, it'll help facilitate even more expansions of businesses in this area. So I too am very excited about joining with other council members and hopefully supporting this extension from three to five years for property taxes related to the expansion of Hanard Machine.
All right, thank you. Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam. And in a previous employer, we utilized their services, and they were great, and I'm assuming they still are available to the, the balance of our community as well, to provide services. So we found them to be exceptional in what they do.
I'm sorry, you lost me.
As, as a company?
Yes.
Exceptional in the services that they provided?
I see, okay, yes.
To my former company.
Now I'm following you.
Yes.
All right, thank you. You can name these companies if you wanted.
Well, it depends on which name people would recognize. They'll take some co Mitsubishi Silicon.
There are a few. Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other discussion? I'd like to take a moment and, and ask another person who's here to speak, and that's, and recognize him, and that's Chad Freeman. And Chad, from the president of SEDCOR, would you like to come up to one of the podiums there and just tell us a little bit more, because you are a valuable partner to us, and I know that you have also been working on these projects and others. Welcome.
Sure. Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity, Mayor and council. I'm excited to, to see these projects, and it's really been an amazing turnaround. As we were talking earlier today, I think it really does speak to the, the collaboration, the groundwork that's been done by the city, but also in terms of working with our partners, both with the state, with the city, with everybody from the council of governments and just a whole whitney of partners that have helped to make these happen, but particularly the, the companies themselves. These are really, I think in all of the projects we've looked at lately in the enterprise zone, have come from local companies that are looking at expanding. And these are, as we just, just heard, friends, neighbors, people we've worked with for years that have an opportunity to, to really expand in the local market. And so it's, it's really fun to be a part, a part of this and to see these companies expanding, and, and a pretty exciting time, so.
Very exciting times. Can you give us a little window into what you're seeing as the president of SEDCOR? Now you've been here about six months.
Been here about six months, so, you know, this, this is a great time to be joining, but the timing is everything, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think one of the cool parts about it is really when we look at, comparing last year. Last year, as a course of just looking at, at financial investment, because really we, we measure economic development in terms of jobs and investment. And so when I look at that last year, there was about $16 million of projects that came through, through, through last year, and that was the recession. And the city really took that opportunity, and the region as well, as a time to, to invest and, and build towards the future. And from that, in the first quarter since, since January of this year, we've seen $55 million worth of applications for enterprise zone, representing several hundred jobs, and in many cases, very good paying jobs. I think that really provides kind of a nice litmus test for when, when we look at $16 million for one year versus 55 for, for half a year. So hopefully we'll have very many more of these to come.
I can just see that on the chart. That's really pretty impressive line.
It's, it's a big chunk, yeah.
That's wonderful. Thank you. The, councilors, do you have any questions? Councilor Nanki?
So you need to actually use the Star Trek Enterprise to bold to go where no one has gone before piece as you're moving this through as well. The Salem Enterprise.
That's right. That's right.
We can make a ship too, if you'd like, yeah.
I was watching my own personal marathon on Star Wars over the weekend, so it's still there, kind of.
I see, okay. Mr. Freeman, thank you so much. We appreciate your collaboration with the city. I remember when you first started at SEDCOR, you were, you know, you hit the ground running, and, and I know that you've been working very closely with our city manager and with our urban development department, and we appreciate that collaboration. It really is a big step in the right direction for all of the economic development that we're all working on. So thank you, and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Appreciate, appreciate very much. All right. I believe we have a motion on the floor, and it was made by Councilor Clem and seconded by Councilor Claussen. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And we have... A special order of business this evening. We have the, an investment policy report, and I see that Sandra Montoya is here. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for listening this, this evening. Tonight, I'm Sandra Montoya, and I'm the Assistant Finance Director. Before you this evening, we have the investment policy that was last updated in 2008, and it's now before you tonight. And I wanted to just highlight some of the changes that we have made throughout the investment policy, and also introduce the team of folks that have been working with me over the last couple of months to do that. As you know, well, from our updates in the finance committee, we brought on an investment advisor in November of 2012. That investment advisory firm is PFM. And with us this evening is Lauren Brandt, and she's the managing director for PFM, and Allison County is her senior analyst. And my right-hand person is Marnie Anderson. And so these three wonderful women have worked tirelessly over the last couple of months to really update a policy that, for most people, is pretty nebulous, but for us, is something that we use, you know, religiously every week when we're taking care of city investments, and really just trying to protect the city's money. So I'm just going to go real briefly, some of the highlights of the changes that we've made, and then at the end, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer those. So like I said, in 2008 was the last time that we adopted the policy. Prior to that, it had been adopted in 1994, so it had been a long time in between when we had made amendments to that policy. And we call it C7. It's just basically the investment policy. And in 2008, when we updated it, we really had not gone into the recession at that point. So we adopted it in August of 2008, and then the recession hit in September. And so there were a lot of changes, you know, had we had that 2020 hindsight, we would have made some additional changes, but we couldn't have foreseen that. And quite honestly, even the changes that we would have made would have been a little behind the curve, because we would have had to, been investing under that changed policy for quite some time. So now, we've got years of wisdom, and we have the opportunity to re-strategize our policy and take advantage of just some longer, long-term positioning. So with that, we are recommending the extension of the investment maturity, which is currently three years, and we're recommending a five-year investment maturity. That doesn't come without risk, so we do want to highlight that, that the longer term that you go out on that investment horizon, because it's more unknown, it does have some risk, but we're very confident that as we have the tools with PFM to manage all of those risks and to do proper risk assessment, that we would be able to make a recommendation to get out of those investments timely, and actually still have some earnings in that. The second is quite a bit of housekeeping that we did in this policy. For those of you that have had the pain and privilege of going through it with us for the last couple of months, you know that we currently have a policy that's about 30 pages long, and we have now condensed it to 15. We've taken out a lot of redundant language. We've put in a glossary of terms. We've simplified a lot of terminology, not so that it just sounds pretty, but it's actually practical, because like I said, we use it frequently. So we wanted a policy that could very easily be picked up off the shelf from any of our finance folks, or even anyone in the community, and it'd actually be a, a policy that could be understood. We also have due diligence language. So in our current policy, while it does authorize us to use an investment advisor, we didn't really have any due diligence requirements on the city. So what would that relationship look like if we did have an investment advisor? And now that we have one on board, we want to make sure that whether it's me, or Marnie, or whoever the staff is that will come behind us, that they have some due diligence requirements to review that contract on an annual basis, to review those reports quarterly, and actually have performance requirements of the investment advisor, and also of the policy and the reports that we have. The last one is the restatement of bond proceeds. And this, just, I wanted to state, when we invest in bond proceeds, it's pretty strict requirement. It's even more strict than our policy. And basically, in our policy, all we're doing is saying, whatever the strictest bond proceeds investment requirements are, the city will abide by those. And one of the things that I did want to mention, because it's so, such a hot topic right now with the, with the bond proceeds and the savings that we have in the, the streets and bridges, is that any interest earnings on those bond proceeds also extend to the, to the same threshold or the same limits that the bond proceeds themselves have. So if we earn a million dollars on bond proceeds, that million dollars still has the same limitations as the original bond proceeds do. And so we're very diligent. We monitor that very carefully, because there's a great responsibility with that, and a great deal of trust from the community for us to monitor those things. Also, just wanted to let you know that the short-term, the short-term fund board does review our policy. They make recommendations, and those recommendations, along with changes from our city attorney's department, have been incorporated into the policy. So that's the document that you have before you. I hope that you find it easier to read and a little bit more pleasurable. And you'll see that our quarterly investment reports have also been updated to reflect our new relationship with PFM. And enjoy. And with that, I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Are there questions by councilors? Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam. I'd just like you to know that I did read it while smiling, so it was very pleasurable.
It takes all of us to make the world go round.
A lot of staff did a lot of work on this, and our partnership with PFM is a great thing, bring us up into the, the real world, dealing with our, our assets that are out there and available to do something while we're waiting to use them. And as, as I mentioned in the finance committee, I mean, anytime I can... anytime I can decrease by half the complexity and content inside of any regulation or government document is almost miraculous these days. So, an excellent job by all involved on that. And I'd like to thank everybody for staying here till almost nine o'clock tonight as well, in support of policy C-7.
Absolutely. Thank you. Counselor Clem?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The shift in policy that's occurred here is, or is occurring here, is that we are now using a third-party firm to handle our custodial risk.
So, the third party, so PFM is an investment advisor. So, what they are doing is, in conjunction with city staff, we look at our cash flow needs, and we look at the surplus funds that we have available, so excess funds that we want to invest, and we time that investment need or that investment maturity to when we're going to need cash. And so, they're doing that on a daily basis with the right tools. So, that was one thing that was missing in our skills or our toolbox, is that we don't have the technological capacity to be able to grind our investment portfolio in a computer software daily. PFM has that ability. And so, they're constantly scanning for new investment opportunities that meet all of our criteria, that meet our timing requirement, and actually get us some earnings and some yield gain.
Yeah, and I like this idea. I'm just looking for, in terms of the return on that extra expense, that there will be able to get a greater yield out of our available cash, and we'll avoid greater risk on cash that we have out there. Is that really what drives a lot of this?
Correct. So, when we started looking at this project a year ago, when the city's portfolio, and I think at that point, we were earning maybe just under 1% on the total portfolio, other agencies that were using an investment advisor were earning almost double what we had. And again, the reason for it is, cities just aren't as sophisticated. You know, in my position, just as in all of yours, I wear many hats. So, what I can dedicate to an investment portfolio and actually being able to manage it is minimal, but they do this for a living daily, and they have lots of tools at their disposal. So, we don't give up any of our authority to reject any investment. It's called a nondiscretionary investment advisory service, which means that anytime PFM sees an investment that they're recommending, they present it to the city. We're taking a look at it against our criteria, and then giving it a yes vote or a no. And so, we're taking a look at every investment like that. But it is a good relationship. Like I said, they have a lot more tools at their disposal, and, you know, just the analysis that we did or the research that we did bears out that they are actually much better at managing an investment portfolio, and will have greater return than the city could on its own.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, and thank you for that last piece of follow-up. Essentially, depending on the investment advice and the timing of it, and the dollar value of it, will move through to different levels of staff, and, you know, they may be waking Deborah up at 3:00 in the morning. If there's something that's hot and quick, but no matter what they bring forward, we can, or we have to say yes or no.
Correct.
So, we've given away nothing as far as letting someone else run our investments. They're advising only.
Correct. Ms. Montoya, maybe you would like to introduce the three individuals here from PFM Asset Management, so we can know who they are.
Okay. So, Lauren Brandt, and I don't know, Lauren, if you want to come this way. Allison County?
No.
Don't be shy.
Do you want to give you words? Good evening. Thank you very much.
Good evening, welcome.
Lauren Brandt, Managing Director at PFM, and I just want to echo Sandra's sentiments that it has been a pleasure working with the city thus far, and we look forward to our partnership with the city as we move forward. So, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce your colleagues?
Absolutely. Allison County is the senior analyst at PFM, been very integral in the process. And then Sandra, do you want to introduce Marnie?
And I'm sure you guys have all had the opportunity to meet Marnie Anderson, but like I said, she's the treasury supervisor, and really does a lot of the day-to-day work. So, while I'm in meetings, Marnie's actually handling all the work on the inside of finance. I really appreciate all of that work, and did want to let you know that Allison and Lauren are staying locally, so they're improving the local economy, and we've made sure to frequent restaurants and do all the good, happy things that
Thank you.
will help us all out.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate that, and we certainly appreciate knowing how very carefully our finance department, our finance director, our administrative director have, and city manager have really shepherded the city's assets and resources. And it goes back to what I said, I think the first year was, we're not broken, we're not broken. And that is good news, especially in the environment, the economic environment, that we have all come through recently. So, this is a pleasure to have this report. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. I see no unfinished business on our agenda this evening.
Motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have a motion on the floor. We need to approve this. Counselor Nanki, as chair of the finance committee, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would. I would move staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Clausen. Is there discussion?
And with pleasure, I make that motion.
And with pleasure, you made that motion. And is there discussion? All right. We're ready for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, we have no unfinished business, and there are two information reports in your binder. Call your attention to those. We have no first readings. We do have a second reading. And would our city recorder please introduce?
Mayor, before we go to that, Ms. Woods would like to make a comment on 7A.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to rush right past you. Ms. Woods, you have something to say?
Sorry, I was slow on the draw tonight. Actually, both items 7A and 7B, we have received appeals on both of these land use actions. So, 7A, which is a subdivision case in West Salem, we've received an appeal by the applicant of that decision. So, that appeal will be going to the planning commission unless called up by the council. And then the second one, which is a comprehensive plan zone change on Skyline Road in South Salem, has been appealed by the neighborhood association. That appeal comes directly to the council, so that'll be scheduled probably on June the 24th before you.
All right. Thank you. Everybody make a note of that. Okay. Now, we're ready for the second reading on the engrossed ordinance bill.
Engrossed Ordinance Bill Number 1212 relating to land use, establishing new Salem Revised Code, Chapter 220, Site Plan Review, Chapter 225, Design Review, Chapter 240, Conditional Use, Chapter 245, Variances, Chapter 250, Adjustments, Chapter 255, Street Naming, Addressing, and Vacation of Public Property, Chapter 265, Zone Changes, and Chapter 270, Non-Confirming Situations, Amending SRC 31.089, 31.1007, 38.010, 63.030, 63.038, 63.046, 63.047, 63.051, 63.285, 63.295, 66.020, 66.200, 77.150, 95.200, 111.040, 116.100, 116.130, 118.285, 118.170, 118.220, 118.340, 118.410, 119.010, 119.500, 119.560, 119.570, 121.242, 121.680, 121.690, 121.870, 123.050, 123.100, 123.200, 125.080, 126.050, 130.609, 133.100, 135.070, 136.050, 137.040, 137.080, 138.040, 138.070, 139.040, 139.050, 140.1... I'm sorry. 140.020, 140.170, 140.180, 141.080, 142.070, 143.070, 143.080, 144.070, 145.080, 146.050, 147.040, 148.070, 149.080, 150.070, 151.080, 152.070, 153.080, 154.070, 155.080, 156.070, 157.080, 158.070, 159.080, 160.070, 161.080, 162.070, 163.080, 164.070, 165.080, 166.070, 167.080, 168.070, 169.080, 170.070, 171.080, 172.070, 173.080, 174.070, 175.080, 176.070, 177.080, 178.070, 179.080, 180.070, 181.080, 182.070, 183.080, 184.070, 185.080, 186.070, 187.080, 188.070, 189.080, 190.070, 191.080, 192.070, 193.080, 194.070, 195.080, 196.070, 197.080, 198.070, 199.080, 215.080, 300.300, pardon me, 300.100, 300.110, 300.120, 300.130, 300.220, 300.400, 300.410, 300.420, 300.600, 300.610, 300.620, 300.630, 300.640, 300.650, 300.660, 300.670, 300.680, adopting revisions to the Salem, to the City of Salem Development Design Handbook, renumbering Chapter 165 and repealing SRC 63.042, 63.043, 63.330, 63.331, and 63.332. SRC 76.130 through 76.144, SRC 84.010 through 84.200, 112.120 through 112.080, 113.100 through 113.205, 115.010 through 115.040, 116.010 through 116.060, 117.010 through 117.050, 120.010 through 100, I'm sorry, 120.100, and 163.010 through 163.100. I'll take a real call vote.
[inaudible]
Counselor Dickey is absent. Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Benarz is absent. Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Motion carries, right? The ordinance is enacted, will be enacted?
Isn't it?
It is enacted.
It's duly enacted.
Duly enacted, and thank you very much, Kathy Hall, for such a stellar reading of more numbers than I could even keep track of. Yes, well done. Thank you. And well done always. We appreciate so much how you keep us on track all through the meeting and with all the details. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, can we discuss the requirement to have that kind of a reading versus referring to a written document and/or a visual representation, or can we get a little tape recorder that speed, takes text to verbal, and goes [beep], and that would be done?
Can we do that during council rules?
The reading is, the reading is actually a requirement of your charter, and it comes from the old days in which most people were not able to read. And the purpose of the reading is to give the public due notice of the changes that are being made. So, what Kathy does when she reads all those sections is required by the charter, and its purpose is to let anyone that's out there in television land listening, if they want to, they can go to the code and they can see the specific sections that are being changed. So, it is a requirement of the charter to do it this way.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We now have public comment, and I see one person signed up. Josh Pollak, welcome. Come on down.
Josh Pollak, 18. Real briefly, I had changed my security system to Infinity Home, and they've had, they have their own collection billing department, and they had really messed up my bill and double-billed me for stuff. And so, I started really scrutinizing the bill, and I started to see that they would charge me for city permits, a permit for alarm, a permit for municipal response. And so, in investigating this, I got ahold of Kelly Marshall from your department, and she just ran with it. She, you know, I just really, you know, your staff with everything they have to do, everybody, them having to do more and more things upon them, she was just really something. She felt that, in her words, she had to investigate if her constituents were being charged or ripped off by some of the companies. So, she actually called Comcast and went all the way up to the vice president. And I just wanted to know you, one of the things is that the permit was basically a permit that they really, that they, they had told me it was for alarm, but it was actually for the state to allow them to change electrical stuff. And because of her, they're now changing the name, the charge from municipal guard response to verification response fee so that nobody else, and they sent this to all of their customers. And this is a direct result of the caring people that work with our city. And I just wanted to let you all know that.
Lovely. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your sharing that with us.
Yeah.
It's nice to hear, it's nice to hear those stories. I get a chance to hear those stories from a wide variety of sources, and it really is a pleasure to know how many people out across the community are truly appreciating the services of the city and the attention of the city staff, and it's nice that you came down to ask.
I didn't even ask her to call Comcast. I just wanted to verify, and she ran with it. I just, whoever wants to stay up this later, watch this segment so long, I just wanted them to know that you have city staff out there that really care and go the extra mile. And thank you, that they do.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Appreciate that so much. We have no further business because we have no new business, and so, we are adjourned. And remember, we have an executive session in the city managers' conference room now.